Ready to go, alright, 7:41, I'll call Kim Minnie LaHogia. First on the agenda is the variation application for 913 constant.
As you heard earlier this evening, a presentation was made as agreed to be permit the existing building height from maximum 12 feet to 17 feet. I have dealt with Mr. Brooks on more than one occasion and have met with you a few times to get a better understanding of what happened. At this point, I understand everybody's incident in hand and I do believe Mr. Brooks was very unaware. I'm also taking into consideration some of the concerns brought forward by the neighboring properties and also the one this evening that basically said they have no problem with it. I'm recommending that we consider the approval of the application, subject to the applicant entering into an agreement with the town as follows. That the garage should be used for personal use only of the applicant, that there should be no living quarters in the garage, and that the garage not be used for any commercial purpose, including rental, mechanical use, etc. I do believe that this kind of agreement would address concerns that were brought forward by the neighbors at previous meetings. And also what this did was bring to light that we need to change the way we do business.
Okay, you say change how we do business, one, we've talked about this before. What happens a lot is that people bring forward plans and they make changes and now where we are, we're trying to find or figure out where it went wrong. But it doesn't leave us with a lot of alternatives other than saying, hey, let's tell them to tear down your building or take the roof off and drop it down five feet or back and forth. There needs to be some sort of fine in place if we ever get to that point. Because I'm not sure where the responsibility lies, you're right, there's a timeline here. Plans came forward, they were approved, and then afterwards they weren't adhered to. We're trying to figure out whose fault that is. What I don't think us as an organization is to run around town trying to find everyone who's building something and crack down on it, right? It's a responsibility on the owner. If it gets to the point where there's no return, which is where we are now, you can't just say, okay, well, you know, here's the new rules and we'll play nice. Because that's what's happened time and time again, and you mentioned that other areas, I have no idea, but I mean, I have no idea. We all know what goes on, but there's no penalty for it other than whoops, sorry. So everyone keeps playing the same way. Well, at some point, we've got to have something in place that says, alright, you're gonna screw up, maybe you're gonna tear it down, right? We want 5,000 bucks, or 10,000 bucks, or 2,000, whatever it is, something that there's some sort of penalty for doing. Otherwise, it's like having a speeding limit, right? If I drive 150 and now it's... What do you get for 150? I don't know, $500? I don't know, $700, there you go.
I never have driven that fast, but I didn't be nervous in the mannequin bar.
So we have nothing in place, and if we're gonna look at how we change your business, I think we need a fine structure in place that says, hey, we can't have people coming back with the same whoopsie and we move on, right? There's no more whoopsies, when you get pulled over, you don't say, I'm sorry, obviously my cruise control isn't working properly, because I was thinking I was going 110 and apparently I was going 40, well, that's too bad, right? You get fined, I mean, we should be the same way.
So along, along the similar lines, I guess. I mean, apparent to me, when I look at the blueprint for the structure, I mean, it's not a blueprint, it's a hand-drawn drawing that may or may not include irrelevant information. So if we know that we have building ordinances that say something like a maximum roof height of 12 feet, then the building permit itself that somebody is pulling for a structure, for a garage or whatever, you know, from the building permit side, there needs to be some, maybe there needs to be a mechanism that triggers the review of, is all the information here? I mean, it didn't speak to all it at all, so what would trigger Randy, if Randy was the one reviewing it, to think, oh, I'd better check and see if there's a maximum height restriction here? I mean, it's just a garage, why would you think that there wouldn't be? But it's just a garage, and then there's a 10-foot wall, and then it's 26 feet wide, and it's a 612 pitch, and the next thing you know, you're 18 feet high in the air. Oh geez, look at that, there's height restriction. I don't know if that's how it'll play out or not, but it's pretty clear that, I mean, I'm not suggesting that a garage requires a full-blown engineered blueprint. But if it's to be accompanied with a sketch, then the review of that sketch should be accompanied with a set of checkboxes that's making sure that all of the things that could exist, that need to be complied with, are present or not, right? So I'm fine with your recommendation, Randy, probably know, you know it more intimately than I do at this point in time, but I mean, it clearly highlights that we're missing something in the process.
If I can just add to some of the comments, one of the things we did bring forward was specifically that changing the permit itself to be more detailed. Secondly, we did talk with the fines. If we have to redo the blueprints because they changed, there should be another set of, it should cost you a gain of some sort. Not necessarily a penalty, but this is time spent. And the other thing was to ensure that everything is down in writing, stop recorders, and have fines on that. Basically, you know, saying moving forward, if you're gonna stop recorder, it's gonna be in writing. And it's not gonna be so easy to just say, okay, yeah, you're now in compliance, there's gonna have to be a process for it. So this was a learning lesson, I must say, if you've ever experienced this, and a small...
So I know you said, oh, sorry, go ahead.
Crystal?
So I know you said changing the permit, so do you mean the permit that they apply for or the actual permit that they get?
The actual permit they apply for.
Right, so I've seen the actual permit that they get, which is just a little piece of paper that says that they have a building permit from the Town of the Paw. So can we do something to make that more detailed as well? So when we're issuing building permits, it says, yes, you have a building permit for the Town of the Paw for construction of, because like it's literally a little piece of paper that anybody could make, really, if they wanted to, right? It doesn't say anything about it's for the construction of a garage that's 10 by 12 or anything like that. It's a piece of paper that, again, like, I'm sorry, anybody could make it, it's not very attractive or elaborate. So just having something even on that, because, so somebody goes and applies and they get a permit for something, and then they go and they give their little building permit to their builder, but the little building permit that they give to their builder doesn't have the same information that they gave to the town.
That's not the one they give to builder. The one that they get that's little is required to be posted on site for if a building inspector is driving by and they're like, maybe they've done a thousand permits. Like, did we permit that thing? They should be able to see the permit stuck in the window or stuck on the building or stuck somewhere, and be like, oh yeah, okay, and then they can.
And it's actually the application that you staple to the permit.
I just think that to have the information on both wouldn't hurt things, right?
Brian?
Yes, thank you. I have a problem with, I don't disagree with everything that's being said and whatnot. My concern becomes, well, what's the root of the problem, and who's actually responsible? And I said it in council chambers, the owner, the applicant for the permit to build is responsible. And regrettably, as I said in there, that's a responsibility you have to take seriously. You can't, and listening to somebody else tell you, oh, that's okay, it doesn't matter, shouldn't be followed. That's poor advice to get. Because our problem is, and I think our dilemma as counselors, and remember, when we swore an oath, we said without fear, favor, or affection. We have to make decisions without, you know, being influenced by these other things. And our primary role is to enforce our bylaws. Now, if 17 feet is gonna be the norm, then let's change the bylaw to 17 feet. But every, my fear is, is if this is allowed to go forward and we, the idea of, well, we'll police it. Because that's really what the idea is, we're gonna police it for the next 40 years and make sure they don't have any variations to our conditions, which then, well, are we gonna have two building inspectors now, or how are we gonna do that? And if you do that, and then you can't enforce that, well, it's just getting worse and worse. And then you have the issue that what happens with the next person that comes along and says, well, I didn't realize. And we can't, you know, unfortunately, you can't make decisions based on, we can't assume the responsibility of someone else's error. And in this matter, regrettably, it was your error, and you recognize that. Finding a solution to it is gonna be a challenge. Because we can have, you know, are we gonna have these kind of garages all over the place? It's, the other issue is changing in midstream, when you have a building plan that theoretically was gonna be built to compliance, and then you made yourself not compliant by going too tall. And was that a decision made on the fly? I'm not sure. I can't say with certainty that, well, there never was a plan, you know, maybe the package that originally bought was the big package, I don't know. Did you buy the package, or did your construction person?
No, we just ordered everything from Tim Mark.
Maybe it was on sale that week. I look at this and I say, well, there's people that live in that area, there's people that live in our community, and here, I'll just speak to council, because it's a serious issue of do we support and uphold our bylaws or do we not? That's the question. The ownership of the decisions made is not council's. We provided the building permit, whatnot, and from what we heard in chambers and whatnot, there was considerable dialogue and whatnot going on between our building inspector and others, so there was a conversation. It's not as though, well, you were never told anything. And also, in this whole issue, further to your particular issue, it brings up the question of when we provide somebody with a building permit or a business license, what are our expectations? I would assume that they're expected to uphold the bylaws of our community. Is that a reasonable expectation? I would think so. And if it's not happening, and that, you know, we've got a big decision we have to make that could really have a negative impact on you and a financial burden. But we have a responsibility, on the other hand, to uphold and enforce our bylaws and be sure that it doesn't happen again. And if you don't, you know, my fear is if you don't send the right message to people, there'll be those few people out there that will, ah, we can play this game and make it work. And we'll agree to any conditions as long as we throw it up fast.
I think, did you want to say something?
I'll just say a couple of quick things. In situations like this, I think it's easily lost that, at the end of the day, the onus is actually on the person applying for the building permit, whether that's the builder or whether that's the homeowner. Whoever's applying for the actual building permit is the one that, the onus is on to build it to our bylaws. And I think people need to be better informed about what those are, and I think that speaks to how we do the permitting process and having those laid out properly so everybody can see exactly where things are and how things should be built. And I agree with Brian to a certain extent that, you know, I don't think that people are trying to circumvent our bylaws or anything like that, but sometimes it seems easier to ask for forgiveness rather than permission, I guess, and I feel like that's what the case is here a little bit. Whether or not it was intended to be that way, that's a situation that we're dealing with now. I don't feel like we should be punitive in this case, but I feel like it's something that we need to be dealing with going forward, so.
So, if I may, just my quick thoughts, and then we can move on. I find that most rules and regulations come to me because of human error, human fault, or human ignorance, or human whatever. But it's usually people who don't understand or whatever, so you have to start a rule. And so we thought we had things in pretty good place, things were going fine, and in this set of circumstances, I think what's happened here is that he said, she said, nothing's written down, nothing's on paper. And so it puts us in a bit of a tough spot. So I think that there needs to be some serious thought given to doing that, to coming up with some kind of a fine system, making sure that whoever applies for a building permit understands what's involved. It's more than just buying a lottery ticket, okay? There's conditions that apply. And now because of this situation, there will also be fines that will apply. And so I think that's where we have to go. I just don't, I don't see any sense in having you tear down your garage or make it lower. I just don't, it's done, it's there. And we now, now because of that, we'll have to go back and rewrite our bylaw on this and tighten it up. And if something happens, then it's recorded, it's documented.
I guess for myself, one of the differences I've seen in this situation was, Mr. Brooks, you approached me on how to remedy the situation, not to look for ways out of it. You came to me and you did what you wanted, or you did what you could to make things legal to accommodate what happened. And I took that with a lot of thought. Hence, part of my recommendation.
So, anything else, anybody want to say anything else on this? Just to give you an idea of where this goes now, in a couple of weeks, we'll have another council meeting and we will make our decision at that time. I think everybody's been heard. The rest of the meeting is just as riveting as this, you're welcome to stay. It's exciting stuff.
Good luck.
Thank you all very much. Beth? 3.3, Airport Subdivision. Oh, yes, I'm sorry, yeah, 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 I can't just screw it up now.
You can either choose what you want, you can take my recommendation, you guys can do what makes you happy.
What is your recommendation again?
My recommendation is that we approve the variation application, subject to the applicant entering into an agreement with the town that says the garage should be used for personal use of the applicant only, there be no living quarters in the garage, and that the garage not be used for any commercial purpose, including rental, mechanical use, etc. These were some of the current concerns that were brought up by persons at first meetings.
Further though, we need to tear the bylaw apart and rebuild it.
Yeah, but this is like specific to theirs?
This is specific to the public.
Yeah, to their actual application?
I'm okay with your recommendation.
Yeah, me too.
It's a motion to prove it.
Well, hang on, Brian's gotta stand up.
With regard to that, based on what I've heard read out, if he says, no, you can't enter my property to inspect, what do you do?
Sorry.
One more time.
Well, you're saying we're putting conditions on, but if we don't have the ability to inspect the property to see if the conditions are being met, because he says, no, this is private property, get out of here.
Cam, he fits in as agreement, that says we have access to it, and that's the only way he's getting it.
Well, yeah, as long as, you know, if you're looking at that approach, then you need something that allows us to do that. And the other thing is, do we do it annually? Because what happens when that big?
I'm sorry, what are you suggesting?
Like, to make sure that he doesn't, like, so if he did any sort of renovations to that building, it would require a building permit. If he didn't get a building permit, our building inspector could go in and shut down his work site for not having a building permit.
No, I'm referring to it's personal use, well, what's personal use?
Confirm that he's doing that.
You know, and you go in there and he's got a welding shop or whatever, it doesn't matter. Or he's got a big workshop as opposed to a garage.
What are you proposing for a solution?
What are you saying is that, what's gonna happen, right? You say, okay, we're done, everyone forgets about it, the next council comes in, it's never talked again. It should be something in the agreement, I think is where you're trying to say, maybe annually, wherever the inspector is, goes in. Because just because you built something isn't a reason to go back. We're saying, there's conditions being laid out, and we're back to where we are, but we're not really gonna enforce it. Here's what you should do, but see you later, we're done, right? There's gotta be some steps, there's a process to follow, right? So if we screw it up, we're not gonna find you because we can, and you're only gonna use it for this, and we're only gonna come every year once a year and check. It's gonna take five minutes and that's fine, unless you got a shop going. Because otherwise, why are we just washing hands, saying, alright, that's good, see you later on to the next guy, the next guy comes along, we get the same thing. We're back to no enforcement, pardon me, I have enforcement officer. Right?
So what's the solution?
Saying once a year, part of the agreement says once a year, there's an inspection. For how many years, 10 years or five years?
Forever?
I'm like, why does she have to just get stuck here listening to?
Alright, so it's a 10-year deal? Do an annual inspection once a year?
Well, is it a 10?
He's gonna do it.
Jim, is it a 10-year building?
Yeah, it's forever, the variation would be forever.
So now we have to revisit the life of the building?
Well, that's what we're writing in the agreement, that's completely realistic.
We're gonna do this in everyone's home.
Or should we be putting the onus on this?
Makes sense, Jim. He didn't follow, he didn't adhere to the process, so we got a choice. We say, okay, we're fine with that, we can't find and we can't do anything, cheating like he did something wrong. It's not like everyone else, no one else did anything wrong, so what have we got to check for?
We can't say that, we've had a couple of people come here and build, build a garage, build a garage, and immediately, yeah.
We just talked about we hired someone to do this, right? And it's a learning process, and that's what our C A L pointed out. So the process is, okay, we're still learning, but we're not going backwards, we're going forwards, and there's gonna be some reasoning why.
What would you recommend in this field?
Checks once a year, someone's gotta check on it, right?
Forever?
It's five minutes, it's five minutes, well.
Because the variation goes forever until it's out.
Until the property, until it falls down, burns down, whatever.
For the length of the duration. If the building hits the ground, then the variation is done.
Yep.
So for the length of the variation. So you could start the development agreement with that, for the length of the life of the building, for the variation existing.
And it's partly our fault, then.
I will also see if we can put any kind of a K V on property, so that the new property owner knows. I don't know if we can, but I will try, because I know land titles has changed a lot of the conditions. Yeah, it's basically the agreement we've been signing with him gets registered against the property so that anybody that goes to buy in the future, but I would have to see, because I know they've changed what they'll permit to be on a development, but I will get through for sure. Yeah, and it's a $75 fee, whatever, it's definitely worth it.
It is. So we'll apply, can we?
If we can.
Can we charge him for the inspection? Well, because the other thing is, what do you do, the first thing you look in, you say, oh shoot, this isn't what was expected, this isn't personal use.
Well, I feel like we're going down the rabbit hole here, man, we've got a long night in front of us. Do we need to take this further here?
Well, and I think that, like, we're also, like, assuming that he built this monstrous garage to do all these things, or that he did it to be malicious, or that he knew what he was doing. And I think that what actually happened was there was some miscommunication. Maybe all the information wasn't given, maybe there wasn't some questions asked that should have been, and like, he said, right here, when we said, you know, we would approve it on the condition that blah, 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 he was nodding his head, like, I really, I mean, I kind of know Delmar, he has a huge boat. He rents a place to house his boat, and so now he won't have to rent a place to house his boat and his golf cart and stuff anymore. I don't know if anybody else has ever gone to look at the garage, but I went in there. Once his boat is in there, he's not put in a workshop or anything else in there, let me tell you. Like, there's room for a vehicle and that's about it. Like, I drove by, I looked at it, I looked at the outside to see, like, because people were saying that it made the neighborhood look bad and all this stuff. Like, I personally didn't see this, and again, I saw it with his boat in there, there's not much room for anything else once his boat is in there.
If council chooses to allow it to remain as is and whatnot, and we choose to set aside our bylaw, maybe we should consider asking that mural be done on the side of the building.
Yeah, no, I mean, we're putting conditions on this, and so.
He was okay with it, I talked him out of it.
We'll do annual inspections for the length of the variance. And let's have a look at the bylaw and see what we can do about it.
Yeah, there's a lot of different things that we could be doing.
No point getting a $200 fine, that's not gonna matter.
And secondary to that, right now, it's basically our bylaw guy or inspector goes and looks at stuff. They, moving forward, the onus needs to be on the applicant with the permit. You are to contact us when you hit those stages, it shouldn't be up to us running around chasing people. That's part of the permit process.
Are we there? Okay. Give me the dollar in corporation.
3.1.
3.1, I suppose they're 3.2.
So I'll go first, and then I'll hand off to Kim, she's very excited. So, over 18 months ago now, I just got 18 months, you guys asked me to step into this role, and the first bit was mostly putting together fires. Big one, doing C K P I, and that's probably about eight to nine months. From there, we finally had some time to sit down and assess things, and in that process, hiring an executive director was part of that. Also, some operational pieces changing here and stuff that's quite boring, but was part of the agreement. All been laid out now, we feel like at least we're moving forward. Randy or Jen set up the timelines of recording meetings, Brian has his budget. So we've had time to sit down and go over our three key areas we want to work on, and they're healthcare, entrepreneurship development, and housing, along with sums and agreements that Kim's been working on as well. So of those three, two are really in their infancy stage, right, because housing, entrepreneurial development. But healthcare is a big key piece, I think, of our community. Don't think we get too many arguments on that. We looked at the model we used with C K P I, and I was going ahead and finding someone who's an expert in that field to help facilitate that sale in that case. And in this case, it's the same thing, we hired B6D Strategies to develop an integrated healthcare and education center proposal for. So that's in the works, and hopefully by April or July, which is our next update, and we have an update on that. Because we grew this up here and met with Kim myself, Kim Cook is the lead on that sort of process. But the organizational estimate is the R H A is obviously in there, and we stand. And if anyone wants a copy of their development plan, they can, I'll tell you, I'll send you a copy straight to them.
I have a copy.
So as I stated, in the last two months, we've done some operational thing up. Kim's certainly not in that part, but she has another project she's working on, so you can hang these around and go on some of the things, the additional things.
There's some career projects that I've been working on, the entrepreneurship part. I was asked to look at this, Pal, and what that is, it's an online research and planning tool for anyone in the Paw looking to open a business. So it lists all the permits and licenses you would need. So I have assistance from Town of the Paw, we're putting the info together, which is ready to launch online, using Town of the Paw website as soon as I have access. So I've been emailing the contact, also on the work. So it's pending right now, and I also want to show you know, R M O C M are on board as well, so they're gathering their information as well to also launch this. Our goal is to kind of team up together to kind of have an announcement and say we're launching as a region.
This sounds a good thing.
Yes, yes.
Yeah.
And then also with entrepreneurship, I'm also working with R M assisting Collins Barrows with promoting their self-employment program, which is a partnership with Service Canada. So participants in the S E program are eligible for up to 52 weeks of training and business support. So in essence, you can receive E I benefits for one year while you start your own business. Businesses must be launched in the later than the 13th week into the program. So the benefit of the program is to provide financial support to the entrepreneurs during the whole time of starting a business, which is the first year.
Anybody helping with their business costs?
I'm not sure about that, but I have to talk to Collins Barrows with more details. I know they've had a few people contact them, and so we have a few people that are interested. Also, I wanted to talk about the card tour that I helped organize. So in my previous position, I worked for the Center for Original Living Resource Development, called Winnipeg. So I'm very familiar with how card operates. So I had mentioned the idea to two people, but I was actually asked for lunch by Doug, and he had the same plan I did. So he had asked if I'd be interested in setting up a tour to partner with all of the key players here in town to kind of bring the card model here to the Paw. So the discussion was the possibility of duplicating it in our area. So because there is a demand for trained workers at Canadian Craftive Industries, also Mannequin Barros Base will be coming to O C M to build their manufacturing plant, so they would also require trained workers. I wanted to kind of give you just a brief overview of card. So their mandate is to assist people living in Winnipeg with literacy, education, training, and employment services. There's also a one-stop shop, they have their own developed education center where you can achieve a very mature student diploma. And what is most interesting with them is they have a college store known as Nevenon College Applied Technology, and they only offer trades and training programs that are in demand. So upon completion, they have a better chance of finding employment. So, upon completion, they have a better chance of finding employment. So, uh, for example, TIG welding, carpentry, healthcare aides, ECDs, power engineering. And they also have, they just recently launched their gas turbine and overhaul repair program, which is a partnership with Manitowar Aerospace. So, why their system works so well is that they are off, all clients and students that are a part of CARD are offered support throughout the process. So, they incorporate essential skills, on-the-job training, employment counseling, so cover letters, resumes, mock interviews, um, they also have healthy living programs, state care, housing, breakfast, breakfast programs, and referrals to other agencies. So, um, I know that the meeting and the tour was a success, um, so I sent out a request to the group that attended for the pre-session, session, and we will be meeting again on March fifteenth at the Visitor Information Center, and we will be discussing how we can partner as a community to make CARDS now a reality in our, our area, and the executive director, Marilyn Bartlett, has agreed to help us in any way that she can. Okay, and, uh, with the tri-council, I was asked to organize the tri-council meeting, which I'm very happy with, and with our last agenda, there were three working groups created. So, one was the smart cities application, and Brian sits on that as well. So, right now, we're kind of shopping for ideas for what we are going to submit. The other working group was for the credit fund application, that one's kind of just sitting on the back burner for now, because we're more, we're focusing more on the application for the smart cities, because it's due April twenty-four, so we want to submit something by then. And we also have the transit system working group, um, and we're kind of just, we had one meeting so far, and we, I'll continue to update you as that progresses.
See, I have to say, like, for that.
For the transit, it's big. Everyone that I approached is very interested and agrees that we do need some type of transit system in our town, um, or in our area, so I'm kind of happy with that one. And then Townfolio is the last project that I'm working on. This is something I also brought up at the tri-council, so it's an online profile of your, I guess, of your town, and it lists your stats, and, um, what's great about it is that you can customize it to your area, so you can highlight our, our manufacturing, our agriculture, our growing tourism industry. And I kind of misquoted at the last, um, tri-council meeting, so it is actually twenty-five hundred per year versus three thousand dollars a year if you didn't go within that group. So, I got the proposal, um, to see if that is still low, and that would also be listed on the Town of the PAW website. I think that's it. So, is this for Andy? Yeah. And so, is this something that the tri-council applies to? Uh, yes, that was the quote they sent for the, the tri-council.
Okay. Any questions, anyone? Are you moving?
Yes, moving actually.
You're staying within the area, right?
Where, where did you go? Where'd you find you, Jen?
Next to another dump.
Oh, yeah.
Good, good, good. Well, have a good time, it's always fun.
I'm almost done, I'm being very fun.
Thanks for coming by.
Thanks, Kim. All right, we'll jump up to three point three now. Airport subdivision, impressed from Councilor Gibbs.
I'm good in bringing this up, actually, because I think there was maybe a little bit of a miscommunication when Ellen and I first talked about this. I had provided prices when it came to the one particular subdivision that we had an inquiry vote, which is the ORC siding. At this point, I believe that it's in our best interest if we're gonna do one. We do one subdivision, and that would be the one that I would recommend, that's of the most demand. That's not saying we don't look at some sort of a plan in the future for the rest, but I'll give you a bit of a history on that. How this all started is, these subdivisions had all come up at one time, and we were gonna do it in one application. We knew that there was gonna be some shortfalls, and it was gonna extend the time limit, and that if we did it in one big chunk, it was gonna hold up the other pieces. So, that's why we split it into four different subdivisions. We had hoped, or was anticipated, that the lakefront lots were gonna be a little more successful in their sale initially, and that we were gonna use that money to continue on with the rest of the subdivisions. That didn't quite work the way it was anticipated, so that's why the rest we just let lapse. So, it's my recommendation, if we're moving forward, right now, we have a gem, we have the ORC siding, which is one of the few, this is pretty much the only place in this whole area which would give any industry or any company access to rail line. It's, it's a gem because you've got access to rail, you've got access to, uh, to air, and you've got access to road. We did have one person come and talk about it, but the problem being, it's gonna take at least two years to get that ready. And that's just to get the subdivision in place, because there's agreements that need to be done, we need to talk to, CN is the actual still owner of some of it, so there's a lot of work to do on that. So, I'm recommending that we do look at, at least doing the subdivision or starting a process for that specific area. And Jim, in our conversation, you had mentioned that at one point, there was an overall plan for an whole airport area. I haven't been able to locate it, but I've had a few calls into people that may wanna locate that. But I'm recommending what we do is, that is a definite one that I would like to see out of all of that. Then we can slowly move into the rest, cause right now, to do it all at one time, we can't afford it. It's just, it's not affordable, and I know we talked about using the airport reserve, but we have the, the road that's gonna be coming in, that's gonna be costly. I think we need to be very cautious of our finances on it.
So, where, where do you think we're coming from?
With that, we're gonna have to be looking from probably a development fund, like a land development fund. And again, we're not gonna totally do the subdivision. What I'm recommending we do is, we, we basically do the subdivision, but no internal rolls, no nothing with that. If a developer comes in, let that be their cost. But let's at least have it ready, like we do-
Get the overall plan.
Yeah, like we do in the back of, uh, of Morris Road. If there's a plan there, it's subdivided, but it's not really developed.
So, does that be your D then?
Sure.
Okay.
And, and the second point was about the tax increment, which was-
Yeah.
Touches on your last piece.
Yeah.
Maybe that's a way to do the development.
Yeah.
Further roads, yeah, for sure.
Yeah.
I don't know if Jen had any luck contacting-
I don't know.
That could be applied to a few areas in the community.
Yeah, basically, and one, and what we've talked about is, the subdivision process itself right now would not be kind of covered under the, the TIF, but if a developer was coming in, and then they needed help with that, that would fall under the TIF. But anything spent beforehand wouldn't be applicable.
So, in, uh, Counselor Gibbs' issue sheet, it identified thirty to sixty thousand dollars, is that-
To get that little area.
For the one subdivision, right? And that would probably be roughly the same for each additional.
Some of them will be a little more, because if you look at the internal airport area, uh, you've got a lot of property that are surveyed, that costs you a little more. Each parcel you add in, costs you a little bit more.
Oh, okay.
Each, each extra lot. Then you also get into, with some of the residential lots, then you have to pay out to the schools. I don't know if you guys are aware of that, that was something that's come in a couple of years back, that if you have so many residential lots, you either have to give A, a lot to the schools, like to the local school, or you have to give the equivalent of the cost of a lot. Yep. That's- So, that's back in the day.
Great system, man.
Well, it wasn't council school division that did that, that's a provincial thing. So, that's my recommendation, is at least to go forward with one, and I think that's one that really needs to be done.
Brian?
Do, uh, do we have a plan beyond the plan to do the subdividing and laying it out in terms of, this is the project, and I guess what I'm thinking is, we don't wanna get, well, we invested a bunch of money and, and then it didn't take off, and then we're sitting there with, with nothing happening. So, uh, as part of the thing, just sort of roughing out, this is step one, step two, step three. Because the end result is, uh, you know, by whatever year you wanna pick, you want those lots to place used. Otherwise, why put money into it?
Right, but step, I agree with you saying the steps, but step one is a huge step. That's why I brought it forward.
Yes.
How this started, someone sort of made some inquiries-
Yeah.
About, about property, right? That that potentially could fit. That's at least two years to, to even get to the end of step one. You have all the plans you want, you got two years to, to work on the rest of your plan. But until we get that first piece done, it's, it's similar to what Manitowar Housing is doing near UCM, right? They're putting a plan in there, it might be a fifty, it might be a hundred year plan, might never get done, but they have a plan in place, sort of someone wants to come and develop and say, "Hey, we can, we can help you out," right? They'll take it, here's a spot for him, he can sell to. Someone came to us who can say, "Yeah, that's great, we got this spot, that's an awesome spot, what do we gotta do?" "Well, we gotta get a plan in place, so that's two years, and then we gotta do this," and then the guy, like, so, we lost them at two years.
They're gone.
See you later.
Well, yeah.
If we don't ever, if we keep talking about this, and, and in a sense, it all comes back to the airport. Well, we wanna have a vibrant airport, we talked about having a vibrant airport, and we rely solely on, on, on-
Yeah.
Well, we're on, on, on fuel sales, right? So, big forest fire here, we're getting them down, so we need to start smoothing that out somehow, making that, you know, a center.
Right, and I, I agree that step one is always the big one and whatnot. I guess, I guess what I, I'm a little concerned about is, is, uh, beyond that step one, while step one's going on, you better be painting the picture for the future and, and make it rosy and, and positive, so that, so that you're gonna move it forward. Uh, otherwise, uh, you get step one done, and then, you know, like, there are one subdivision over by Snackland, like, it's twenty-eight later.
The difference there, and I wanna be very clear about that, and you touched on two, we're not putting services in. Those other subdivisions, like the one at the lake and the one there, they are fully serviced lots that the town developed. We are not developers, I'll say that again, we are not developers, and whoever thinks they are, you know, should start seeing the issue, like, it's obviously on a different page. This is not what we're, that's not what I'm applying, I'm saying that. We need like a map like that. So, it's done. That other stuff comes later. The mistake the town makes is, in my opinion, and again, with those lake lots, and, and with Wood Acres too, we spend everything on building and developing, hoping people are gonna come and buy. But we need a template in place, so someone can, can come in and develop it, pay for all those services, and they can sell.
Right.
That's how, that's how the game runs, that's how other communities do it. We think we need to be that developer, and we're not. And I don't know how many times we can screw it up till people start realizing that we're not good.
Well, I guess, I guess, Mike, to make a long story short, my concern is, from that, doing what we do to get the drawings and the plan, that connecting bridge to getting the developers here, we have to, like, we don't wait for them to, to drop in and, and do it. We have to be, have some sort of a little plan to promote it or to get it out there, so that people are, the, the people we're looking for are gonna be aware, and, and that's, costs a little bit of money. It's not like it costs a lot, but if there's not a plan in place, then, then you build it, and then, okay, now what do we do next?
Well, we want, we want developers to come with us, to come to us with plans.
I know, so you have a plan to, to-
It'd be great if we had a CDC that had like a full-time employee or something like that, that could-
I believe so.
Continue with that plan.
We have a part-time one.
That's called an economic development.
That's, that's what it was.
You know, so, uh, that's what we have now, so-
Well, okay, but what about inviting a developer and, hey, come on down, here's your plane ticket or something.
That's what we have a queue without my corporation for, is to meet with those people.
But, but that's all part of this whole planning thing, eh? Cause if they don't come and see it, well, it's-
But until you do that, Brian, we're two years away from that, is what I'm scared.
Down the rabbit hole again, here, let's, let's get back on track, Mr. Chair.
I agree, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
We just wanted to get a roundtable consensus.
Yeah, are we?
Yep.
Good?
So, we're proceeding with the ORC siding subdivision, and we're looking at the plans for the other one.
Right.
Other ones, pardon me.
Mr. Tiff, Mr. or Mrs. Tiff.
Yeah.
Mr. or Mrs. Tiff.
Okay, uh, next on the agenda is cost share that 2018 election with the school.
Uh, this is something that we do every other election year, and basically, what we did was advise the school that we are narrowing down to two facilities this year, rather than four or five, what we usually do. So, they sent a letter saying they would be happy to cost share, that says, "Please use yours."
Any issue?
So, they're, are they going to have the two fuel stations?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure they weren't still gonna do five, and we were gonna pay fifty percent.
No.
Okay, your place is good?
We're like making a space or something.
Okay, water and taxes, isn't that right?
Did I miss one?
Nope.
Have a resolution for appointing January as senior election official.
Hold on, that's there.
Hold on, I'm sorry, yes.
We, we like to go three, two, rather than two, three.
Okay. So, basically, what we require is a resolution that would appoint election officers for the 2018 general election, and it'll be Jen as the senior election official and he as the assistant.
Sounds good.
Good.
Yeah. Okay, I think I'm on water to taxes now.
You go, everybody.
Thank you.
So, we require a resolution to add water to taxes. Just wanna point out, Clerical has done a great job keeping on top of the outstanding water accounts. This is, uh, all being done in accordance with the municipal act. Previous years, we've had a couple hundred thousand dollars, cause we were behind in April, and they have been all caught up in the last two years.
Wonderful, good to hear. All right, uh, 2018 AMM, reefer and CAO district meeting.
It's a little frustrating that the expectation would be for us to drive all the way around it for a two-hour meeting. I'm going to ask if we can attend this via teleconference. I'm also gonna ask whoever no longer having this in the north, considering it's our district meeting.
Oh, yeah.
That's a very good point.
That's what it used to move around, right? Between us and Snow Lake and Thompson and whatever.
Zoom, it's a great, it's a great way to have a meeting.
I understand that it makes, that it gives AMM the opportunity to be in one spot in Brandon, but this also means that everybody from the outside, outside community has to drive to Brandon.
Okay. Pay per unit counts?
Uh, we would require a resolution for pay period number four, or pay period four, in the amount of a hundred and four thousand, five eighty-two sixty-five. General checks in the amount of seven eighty-three, one seven eight fourteen, and electronic funds transfers in the amount of eighty-five, seven twenty-three, ten, for a total of nine hundred seventy-three thousand, four eighty-three, eighty-nine. Just to give you a couple of holy smokes bills here, we have airport fuel with Morgan fuels, sixty-seven thousand. We have sold a lot of fuel this year at our airport, more so than normal, I think we have two extra truckloads of fuel that came in. Receiver general, that's five hundred and fifty-five thousand, that's your C and P cost, and your quarter rate, and recycling, it was a quarter of their MMS grant in the amount of twenty thousand dollars.
Okay, pay the bills, pay the bills. Motion to move in camera?
Yeah.
Be it resolved, or we do now, you can say it.
No, sorry.
Take a check.
It's great, this is a, this is a huge step forward.
Be it resolved, or we do now move ourselves into the in-camera portion of the committee of the hall with Mayor Scott as the chair, discuss matters that are piling on our attention.
Good job.
You're getting there.
Well done.
Getting there.
And it's only clever.
Only got it once. Haven't had an in-camera yet.